Okay. It is 7:02. I'm going to call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting Thursday, June 15th at the Lakeville Public Library. The first item on our agenda tonight is the Manzen Bud's Good Hearing and I am going to read into the record. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June 15th, 2023 at 7:00 PM at the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street. Upon the petition of Alexander Mazin, applicant has requested to modify a special permit under 7.4 to replace the operator Bud's Goods and Provisions Corporation with Bud's Goods and Services, Mass Corporation, and to expand the operating hours from 6:00 AM until 10:00 PM. The property site is 475 Kenneth Welch Drive and is owned by Green Peak LLC. Now, before I get any further into the hearing, there is an item that needs to be handled through the Board of Selectmen first. And because they still need to square some stuff up with the Board, I have a letter. Let me show you the correct one, yes. From Phil Silverman, who is an attorney on behalf of Bud's Goods. In light of the Select Board to approve the associated HCA Host Community Agreement, please allow this correspondence to service of request to continue tonight's zoning board of appeals hearing regarding Bud's Goods and Provisions Corp's request to modify its special permit until July 20th, 2023. And this was sent to us this afternoon. So, again, we don't want to put the cart ahead of the horse here, so we're safer to wait for the Board of Selectmen to deal with the Host Community Agreement first before we hear anything in regards to this petition. Having said that, because we have a request, do I have a motion to continue this hearing until July 20th?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so we will revisit this at our next meeting. Okay. Next agenda item. It's the Gear Hearing. Lakeville Zoning Boards of Appeals, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June 15th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street. Upon the petition of Justin Gear, a variance is requested at a 5.1 to construct a 15 by 17-foot addition that would extend into the setback. Property site is 22 Crooked Lane. Okay. So, what I have here, the documentation to read into the record. We have a letter from the Board of Health dated June 8th. Board of Health received a copy of the plan, a proposed addition to 22 Crooked Lane by Riverhawk dated 5/11/23. The kitchen addition will not interfere with the existing septic system. Also, since the kitchen does not increase the number of bedrooms, then the Board of Health has no objections to this addition. Also have a letter from Conservation Commission dated June 8th. 22 Crooked Lane, there are no wetland issues at this location. So, final memo we have is from the Planning Board dated June 12th. At their Thursday, June 8th petition, Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments regarding this position. So, we do not have any issues with any of the other boards that made comments. Do we have Mr. Gear here? Why don't you come on up and stand at the podium so we can hear you loud and clear and everyone who watches Lakeville can hear you loud and clear. Tell us what you're looking to do.
Looking to add like a kind of a mudroom entrance into our house because when you enter the house, it goes directly into the kitchen. So, just trying to save some space, give us a little more room to move around.
Okay.
It's going to be a 15 by 17 addition, which I think goes about two feet into the setback. It would be one-story addition. We have the plans for it. It doesn't interfere with any of the site from the neighbors. There's woods in between our house and the neighbor's house. Pretty much just a room to add.
Good. Do we have any comments from the Board members?
Nope.
No, I don't. It's just a couple of feedback.
Very simple.
Any comments from?
No.
Mark?
Very straightforward.
Okay. Do we have anyone in the audience who has any comments? Okay. Well, since we're having such a vibrant discussion here, I guess I'll ask if anybody wants to make a motion to approve or not approve the petitioner's request for the variance.
I make the motion to approve the petition for the variance.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as applied for. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That was easy, huh?
Yes, very easy. Thank you.
You're welcome. Kathy, tell them the routine.
It takes 14 days to do the paperwork, then it's submitted to the chancellor. From there, there's a 20-day appeal period. Once that's complete, you'll be contacted and you pick it up and you have to record it at the registry of deeds.
All right. Thank you.
Good luck. Okay. Next agenda item. NSA Property Holdings LLC Hearing. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June 15th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street. Upon the petition of NSA Property Holdings LLC, the applicant has requested to modify a special permit under 7.4 to add three additional storage buildings to the site. Property site is 156 County Street. So, let me read a couple of things into the record here and we can talk a little more about the requests. Planning Board has a memo dated June 12th. At their Thursday, June 8th meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. Board had some concerns regarding how close the placement of the buildings are to each other. They recommended the following. The Planning Board recommends the ZBA ensure that the aisle width between the buildings is sufficient for vehicle and pedestrian flow. I also have a memo from the Conservation Commission dated June 8th. NSA Property Holding, 156 County Street. The subject will require a notice of intent. And final memo we have is from the Board of Health dated June 8th. Board of Health has reviewed the preliminary site plan for 156 County Street by GPI Engineering dated 5/22/23, which shows three proposed storage facilities. Proposed storage facility number one is proposed on top of the existing bleaching field. The proposed storage facility number two is on top of the existing main, existing force main for the septic system and water lines. Neither of these proposed storage facilities can be built in their proposed location because the septic system would not be able to function. Board of Health recommends relocating the storage facilities so they do not interfere with the existing septic system. Okay.
I'm going to have to recuse myself.
Well, that's good to know. So, we still have four members left. Couple of things then, I guess. First, I'm assuming you are acting on behalf of the applicant?
Correct.
Could you mind stating your name and for the record?
Yes, for the record, my name's Garrett Picarillo. I'm civil engineer with GPI.
Okay, Gary. So, here's where we are. Obviously, the first point I'd like to make is we are going to only have four available to vote on this one, so.
I'll tell you why. I was originally engineered to do this project here. I can stay on if you want, but I, you know, I know a lot about the site and I was the original engineer.
You were the original ones. You're not doing it now.
No.
And if I'm correct, if there's no interest at this point, you, I don't think you're in any danger, but I think it's better that you point out to the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, he has no financial interest in this project.
None whatsoever.
So, and it's been many years since this was originally built, right? So.
It was built. I can, I can, if you want me to speak, I will.
That's all right, yeah.
Okay. Where the septic system is, you're going to have trouble finding another spot to perk. I mean, it's, we dug quite a few holes out there.
Yep.
And to relocate that, to relocate the septic system?
Yep, that's all we'll need to do. I have a plan that hasn't been provided yet. I just put it together when I received the comment showing where we plan to relocate it.
Yes.
However, we have not done test pits there.
Yes.
But I could get into some more detail on that.
Okay, well, then if you, if, I don't have a conflict with it, I just.
Okay.
Are you comfortable?
I am.
With him? Okay. So, you don't have to recu, if you want to, you can.
Okay. Then I will not recuse myself.
Okay. So, having cleared that up, I guess the next question is obviously, you know, comments that you're going to have to file with them. The Board of Health issue, let's talk about that one right off the bat.
Absolutely.
Because obviously, until you clear that up, it's, you know, do not pass go.
Understood, yep. So, yeah, in response to the leaf field issue, and I'll just go ahead and share this plan.
Okay.
Again, we have not performed test pits yet to confirm any final design. This is an initial preliminary septic relocation plan, is what it is. So, in response to the comment from Board of Health, yes, we totally understood what they say is completely accurate. We're proposing building one on top of the seach field and building two is on the force main that goes to the pump and the septic tank at the office building down below here.
Right.
So, we do plan to relocate the leaf field. That's been the plan all along and the place that we had picked and are showing on this preliminary plan is placing the leaf field down in the western, northwestern corner of the site here within a landscape area. And we feel that's the best place for the site realistically. I want to note that and again, feel free to comment on this with your knowledge of the site. But this septic, this leaf field and this force main were installed, I believe, in 2008.
Yes.
And that is when, and at that time, these four buildings were not built yet.
Correct.
So, this, this site at that time was essentially, you know, cut off here. These four units existed and all this pavement in here existed, but this area was completely undeveloped. It was wooded, okay, at the time, so there was a tree line down right in here, but since then expanded when the special permit was issued in 2016 to add those four buildings, okay? So, to me, that really wasn't an option and we totally agree with you, looking at the, we've looked at the ASBIL, septic ASBILs, we've looked at the test pits you used and all that data. And we agree, we were not finding a great option, at least on the surface, to relocate it in this area, which is why we decided to run a force main somewhat significant length, although we have a nice area to run it outside the pavement and place the leaf field in a grass area. We feel, we have a, we feel very confident we're going to be able to make this work. Obviously, I can't say that without a test pit, you know, I don't have any sort of final design, but it's a landscape area, it's a lot easier to work it within a grass area, whereas this system is actually under the pavement. So, there's quite a bit of restrictions with what you kind of can do with your design when it's under the pavement. So, where it's, it's a little bit more of a typically an easy way to work out the final design until that landscape area. So, that's our plan right now.
Do you have any comments?
I give you, you're aware of the fact that these are all heated and cooled with geothermal?
Correct, yep.
Okay, he's got two massive wells.
Yes.
Right? One comes out and the other goes back in. And those pipes, I, you know, when they put them in, so you're gonna, you're gonna have a, I know you have a slight problem there when you put those houses in, this geothermal, unless you're somehow connecting them up, are these going to be heated and cooled the same way?
They are. So, the plan is to, so yes, just to clarify on that, there's a well.
Yes.
There's no, there's no domestic water connection to the site. Everything's fed by a well and all the existing storage units are heated and cooled by a geothermal from a well. So, yes, that was another big concern of ours in addition to the leaf field. What we actually did was we went out into the field and we did ground penetrating radar to try to locate those geothermal lines because we went through, the contractor installed them, we ran every oven and we couldn't, couldn't get a single drawing of them at the time. So, we went out there and actually used ground penetrating radar to locate them. We were able to locate the force main and the leaf field and everything with that and we found that the geothermal lines actually don't go underneath that footprint.
Okay.
And then that was actually verified by Board of Health ASBIL, septic drawings that I received after the fact.
Yeah.
That actually showed those geothermal lines and there are no conflict with.
Yeah, because when we, when we could find them, because there was no plant and he, the guy went out there and just put them in.
Okay.
And Bill Marksen was the owner at the time.
Yes, yep.
And I said, you should show them on an ASBIL and he said, well, I don't know how we're going to locate them now and so therefore.
So, that's what we had to do. So, yeah, I went down that exact rabbit hole, it sounds like you did.
Well, you already, you've known the problems then.
So, okay, so at this point, you're obviously going to need to go back to the Board of Health to have them approve it.
Approve final septic design.
Right.
Absolutely. But that was, we were going to do that after, we wanted to go through this process first. But yeah, we will. And we actually have to go through planning, first site plan approval as well for this.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Questions from other Board members? Mark, any comments?
Well, the planning board comment had to do with, if you look at your existing building drawings, you have at least 20 feet between the buildings. The new buildings have a 10-foot separation. The planning board, that was their comment, is that they were concerned about that because there was no design drawings for those buildings. So, are there doors facing the 10-foot areas? Are the doors always going to be on the outer areas? You know, what is that going to look like? Is that, the other concern I have that we didn't receive anything from the fire department, usually they want some sort of separation, maybe because of the construction, these metal buildings, they may not be as concerned about greater separation.
Yeah.
But, so those are just a couple of first questions.
Yeah, oh, thank you. So, the first question, the one for the comment from the planning board, yes, we are exactly like you said, we're providing 10 feet between buildings here while the existing buildings do have about 20 to 30 feet between them right now. That was by design, by the end user and the plan is to have only pedestrian access between the buildings and the buildings are laid out in such a way. So, it's probably, I didn't label it, apologize on the plan, but you can see, maybe you can see these dash lines that are kind of within the building footprints. Those are the internal hallways where people can access their units internally. So, those are where the doors would be. So, like, for example, this building will have a door on this end, one right there and one off the back. The smaller one will just have a door on each end, that's why we left plenty of space for access, pedestrian access. And this building also has three doors, one on the side and one on the end as well. So, it is meant to be for pedestrians, cars aren't meant to drive in between the buildings. So, that's that one. And then in response to your, to the fire question, so we actually did, actually our applicant met with the, I believe it was the deputy chief of the fire department. And this was probably six months ago, so at this point, and they just wanted to have a preliminary discussion. They shared the plan with them and brought up a few concerns and essentially they said that we needed to run their fire truck around the site, a truck turn plan, which we did and I actually have as well. They gave us the specs for the fire, the ladder truck to use. And we did that and we were able to show that the fire truck can essentially circulate the entire site, every which way around these buildings with the exception of, obviously, between the proposed buildings, like we were showing. That was the only real comment they gave us. They didn't, they said that they were going to give us some more details. We didn't really get anything from that. So, we've done that to date and we have that plan that I want you to share.
So, so those buildings have like an interior hallway and the units are off of that? Okay, as opposed to the exterior?
So, it's actually both. It's both. It's, there's exterior access as well as interior access. So, like if you pictured like this area in here, right, there's going to be some smaller units facing outside and, or I shouldn't say small, but there's going to be some units that can be accessed via garage doors on the outside as well as some interior, you know, a partition wall, that's generally the idea. And it's designed in such a way that these are, they put the smaller units along these interior pedestrian walkways, so it's not the typical large units that people are dropping and working into them, so.
Did you say you do have the plan that shows the vehicle, the fire department access?
Yeah, I have one. I haven't, I didn't submit it yet because we just did a discussion, but I do have it. Would you like me to show it? I think I have it up here. So, and I have, I have some 11x7 things as well, but the colored, the colored path in here is the fire truck that we made per the Lakeville requirements. And essentially it shows that the fire truck connect, enter the site, you know, they can come in, they can make this turn in here and they can essentially loop any way around these units and exit back out the way they came in. Same goes for these four units on the eastern end as well. They can come in and they can circulate and they can make the turn here between the proposed building and the existing unit as well.
It seems very tight. I can see where there wouldn't be a problem, where it was just without the three new proposed buildings, you could easily gain access left and right.
Yeah, so I will. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Well, let me interject. You said that, I'm assuming Mr. Marksen or someone else met with deputy chief, so, and if they, it's probably easy enough for us just to get a memo from the fire department saying they have no safety concerns. I mean, that's really, that's the issue with it being so now. We want to make sure that it's a safe area and that no one's going to get.
I will say it's extremely deceiving on the scale of the plan. Because when my client originally asked me to put this plan together, I looked at the plan, I said, there's no way a fire truck's even going to get anywhere here going between these buildings and it was wrong because the scale kind of throws you off, so it looks tighter. But that is the size of the fire truck. And I will say as well, that I didn't mention, right now, in the location of the proposed buildings, it is 44 parking spaces for RVs and trailers and things like that. So, a lot, they really depend on what capacity those are filled with at the time, but they would block the fire truck today from getting through there anyway. And it's actually, the building comes up exactly to the edge of those parking spaces. So, it's really encompassing, that's the area.
Yeah. Thank you.
I know it's more of site plan review, but landscaping, I know at one point was a bit of an issue and that will be looked at, so there should be an enhanced landscaping plan for along County Street in particular.
Yeah, so, believe it or not, I remember the 2016 one and that was an issue some of the neighbors had. They wanted to make sure there was some type of landscape agitation to kind of hit as much as they can. Read them.
That's fair. Yeah, we'll provide a landscape letter and address and follow to come up.
Anyone else on the Board have any questions at this point? Comments? I'll open it up to the audience. Does anyone have any? Come on up if you don't mind. Do you want to come up to the podium, sir? State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Ken Chaney. We own 153 County, right across the street from the Lakeville Storage.
Okay.
We don't really have a problem with the storage, but just about a month and a half ago, we had an intruder come into our property and we had to bring the police and we had stuff got thrown around and so I have a full surveillance system on my property. We seen the gentleman come down, I drive, we have a big garage at the top of the driveway, looking down and once we reviewed all the things and gave it to the police, I noticed that he came, it was hard to see, because we couldn't. So, I went over to, I forgot the gentleman's name, I went over to the storage, but, and said, hey, I'm a mechanic, I've communicated a lot with Bill because he had surveillance and I said, listen, if you can do me a favor, I'd like to, I said, number one, I've noticed for the last like month, three weeks, that the big gate that closed wasn't closed. And I said, so that already caught my concern before the issue. And then he, the gentleman said, well, the gate's been down for two months and he has a good camera system there. And I said, well, all I'm really looking for is, because we want to find out was this person dropped off, because he ended up throwing a lot of stuff around on my property, threw off a wall, had a brand new derangle. The cops actually came in when my wife had called and seen all this. So, I said, listen, all I'd like to see is if the footage can show us, did he come from, from the west, did he come from the east or did he come out of the storage here? Because all we could see coming down the driveway is he came like out in the street area, but he wasn't sure because it wasn't enough. He said, well, the camera systems are not been working right. I said, well, all the videos are up on the thing, you see all the whole things. He said, well, the DVR ain't recording. And I'm like, well, to me, that's an issue, I said, because if we can't see and if the gate ain't closed, if riffraff gets in there, you got campers in there, somebody could be living in a camper. So, that, that's my biggest concern is, no, I mean, and I don't know up to this point if, because I haven't gone back. I actually said, and I actually talked to the gentleman, I said, if you want, I have, I have a good surveillance system and I use a surveillance company, I have monitors, he comes in and he does everything. And he said, yeah, send them over. And I sent them over and then I spoke to Nick, the guy that does the survey, like two and a half weeks after, I said, hey, how'd you make out? He said, yeah, I identified some tissue and I told him I could help him. And Nick said, you're never going to call, did they use somebody else? I don't know because I never went back because he didn't have nothing to offer to give to them, like, because the cops were saying how far and I told them, we turned all our footage in and I told him I would go across the street and find out because Bill has shared footage before, like first I had shared footage of just crazy little things. And that's my biggest concern. Like, we moved in, the storage, we moved in like 11 years ago, the storage place was there, we had no problem. So, if we did, we wouldn't have chose to move in. So, it's, that is the issue with me is just having a, knowing especially now more things are coming in, I don't mean, and the system may really up to that point wasn't working. So, I'd like to know what they're going to do. And then the gate did get running again and then it went down again for about maybe two days and then it got back running again. So, that's my biggest concern.
Well, I appreciate your comments. For the record, I'm not so sure how much purview we have over making sure they secure
Right.
their, their property. It sounds like when Bill was a little bit more involved, he was a little bit more.
Right.
You know, cognizant of making sure everything was kept.
Right, right.
A little, in a little different.
And that's what I figured, I just wanted to come in and shed my concerns.
Well, you've shed them, they're on the record now, so hopefully the owners realize that maybe they can be a little bit better of a neighbor and work collaboratively with their other neighbors to prevent these types of things from happening, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other questions from our Board? So, we have a couple of outstanding items here. Obviously, the septic issue, we've. So we have a couple of outstanding items here. Um, obviously the septic issue, we've, obviously we've been explained what the plan is. Um, but that obviously still needs to be approved by the Board of Health. Um, and in addition to that, I think we're all in agreement and it sounds like it's not going to be an issue that for the fire department sign off that, um, you know, those three buildings with them being in such close proximity of each other, um, there presents no safety concerns. Um. So I guess the question is, do we want to act on it now? Do we want to wait for those two to get clarified?
I think we should wait to see the other plans.
Yeah, I recommend that you wait until we get a little more clarification on some of these issues because they relate to the use, you know, whether it should be there or not. So.
So having said that, um, you've heard the comments. I would strongly recommend maybe you ask to continue until July. I mean, you, you have every right to not want to continue and have a stake of vote, but. Yeah, come on up and, uh, part of the reason is it gets put on the record that way because the mic picks it up. So.
Yeah, I, I would like to request that we continue.
To the July twenty?
To the July twenty-third.
Is it twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty, yeah. Third week, July twentieth. Are we looking for the twenty-third now?
There's two right now.
Okay. So we're good. Okay. So we have a, uh, request to continue to July twentieth. Do we, anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion, Grant. It continues to July twentieth.
We have a second.
Oh, second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carries. See you in a month. Come back with all your stuff so we can move you along.
All right.
Hopefully. All right. The next agenda item, uh, is the Lakeville Nursery Redevelopment LLC, which we had here last month. Um, and I had recused myself at that point. So I'm going to recuse myself again and ask Mr. Yumquist to step up and chair this hearing.
Definitely going to do that. All right. I'll read the ad. The Lakeville zoning Board of Appeals, in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, has amended will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. In the Lakeville Public Library for Priestley Street. Upon the petition of Lakeville Nursery Redevelopment LLC, who is proposing to modify a special permit twenty-three dash ten granted on May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, by amending a condition regarding the parking of vehicles. The property site is Five Harding Street. It is located in the business zone. All right, Robert.
Mr. Chairman, board members, for your record, my name is Robert Mather. I represent the applicant. Could, um, from what I see, we have a four-member board, um, which would mean that the vote would have to be unanimous. I would request to ask the board to, um, when you're ready to vote, to take a straw poll. And if there is an opposition, I would like to continue and have a full board if that's, uh, acceptable to the, to the board. I'd hate to.
I, does anybody have an objection to it? I don't have a problem with it.
Um, wasn't that, um, didn't we talk about that quite a bit?
That was a concern last week, yeah. Last month.
Okay.
We had an A. I mean, I thought about it truthfully after reading this and I don't really know. It's kind of up to you guys, but I don't really know how it's going to be. If it's going to make the biggest difference.
The, Bob, why don't you explain to them why we're changing it?
Well, we're, we're asking to modify a special permit. In order to get a special permit, you need a super majority. You need four out of five. So it allows for one negative vote and if there's two negative votes, you lose. Um, if we only have a four-member board, that doesn't mean it has to be three out of four. That means that all four would have to vote. It would have to be unanimous. Since it's kind of not our fault that there's not a full, uh, board, um, we're more than willing to go forward, present our case. But I'd hate to see my client, not that I anticipated, please understand that, I hate to see my client lose with one negative vote. When if the board had five members, it would be granted. Um, I know, um, I used to be the chairman of Millboro. We used to do that as a, um, as a routine since it was our issue that we didn't have the board members. We'd take a straw poll. If there was one negative vote, um, we would ask a motion to continue. We'd come back next month, present the whole thing over again. Um, I leave it up to the board. I'll go forward with four. I'm comfortable in what we're asking for. But I feel necessary to just request that.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Okay. So, um, I think we probably set a record for the fastest return to the board on, uh, two petitions for the, uh, for the same matter. As the board recalls, at your last hearing, um, we, uh, asked for a special permit to allow automotive repair as a use. At that point, we were talking about, um, we were talking about contractor bays, twenty-one contractor bays. We mentioned to you that we had a, um, we've been negotiating with a car dealer to use the entire facility for a repair. But I couldn't, since it was in negotiations, I wasn't free to mention who it was and to go forward on that. I am now free to say that. Um, we are dealing with Greco Ford, um, which is one of the major car dealers, uh, just over a mile, um, up the road, um, on Route forty-four. And Greco wants to have a standalone facility, um, for repairs. The entire site would be used for, um, automotive repair. We would eliminate the bays. Um, that would also result in us having to go back to the planning board. Because if you remember, it was an L-shaped building with the twenty-one bays on it. That's not suitable for a regular repair facility. They want a square close to, uh, a rectangle. So, um, if we receive approval of the board, then the next step would be to go to, excuse me, to the planning board. The problem that we ran into is, um, there were two conditions that were imposed on, by the board. One said, no vehicles are to be stored or worked on outside. No problem with the worked on part, um, but the storing is, is an issue. The second one said that when vehicle repair is completed, the vehicle and our, the equipment must leave the yard within twenty-four hours. So when we spoke to Greco, um, they pointed out to us that it's, it's very common, um, more of the norm that vehicles remain on the site for longer than, than a day. Now, I should have known this myself. I brought my vehicle in a few months to, um, Lincoln, uh, and it was a fairly simple repair to the seat control. Uh, except that they needed a part and they had to order it from Ford and it was there for two and a half weeks. Um, so, um, I get, I understand the need for the condition when we came in before because remember we were having twenty-one contractor bays. In theory, it could have been twenty-one automotive repair shops. Um, it could have been one or more of, of them. And if that were the case, if there were multiple repair shops, we'd have no problem with the restriction like that. But, um, what the request is, um, is to ask you to modify the restriction so that the, the, um, the vehicles to be stored, um, and outside would, the restrictions would not apply if the facility was used for automotive repair, um, by one, um, one user or owner, that the entire facility was used. I, um, like to pass out something to the board. I, I just put down exactly what it was that you granted last time.
Okay.
And what we'd like to see.
If you can.
I brought extras this time.
You don't want to bring anything back with you. They're going to give it to me anyway.
So as I mentioned, when we, when we spoke to Greco, they said, we can't have, no one can have a single, um, owner-user repair facility. With, um, the inability to park cars, waiting for service, waiting for parts to, to come in. And, um, we really don't feel that it would be necessary for this type of facility. This is going to be a first-class, um, automotive repair facility, um, similar to what you see up at Greco Ford. This is going to be a, I believe, six million dollar project? A, a six million dollar project. So we're going to have a first-class, um, facility there. So my proposal, suggestion to the board is that the conditions get revised. And, uh, instead of saying no vehicles are stored or worked on outside, as I mentioned, you have no problem with no work outside. So we would ask that to read, no vehicles are to be worked on outside. And the second one to say that if the entire site is used by one owner-operator for an automotive repair facility, vehicles waiting for repair are to be picked up after repair, may be parked on the site with no time limitations. Remember what we have now. Again, the only reason that we came in, we didn't come in to ask for twenty-one, um, contractor bays. They're allowed. The only thing that we needed was that if any of those bays were used for automotive repair, that's a special permit. So we came in and asked for the ability to use one or more. Um, the site can be fully utilized now with no restrictions as to parking, um, no restrictions as to working outside on vehicles. You can have electricians, you can have, um, um, contractors, um, with backhoes and large machinery. That's allowed, um, as a matter of right here. We think that the change to a one-owner-operator repair facility is way beneficial, way better than, than what we have. Um, I know we only have a small area on Route forty-four that's in, um, Lakeville. I pointed out before, this is the absolute ideal site for this type of facility. I can easily say that this building will be the best in that small area, will be the, um, most impressive, uh, up-to-date, uh, modern facility. That's, that's there. You've all taken your car to dealers and you've seen what their repair facilities look like. They don't look like they did when I was a kid. With wrecked cars outside, um, they're pristine. It's like going into a hospital. Um, the technicians wear white. And mostly because most of it's computer, um, at this point in time. So, um, I would respectfully ask the board to, um, consider revising the restrictions, as I mentioned, so that we can keep the restriction that no vehicles will be worked on outs, outside. But only if the site is utilized by one owner-operator for automotive repair, that there's no restrictions on the, the parking of vehicles. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do you have more questions?
No, I thought that was a reasonable presentation, Anthony.
Thank you.
Agreed. Agreed.
Okay, Anthony. No question? Anybody from the audience have any questions?
Hello, my name's Wayne Cardoza. I live at forty-three Cross Street at Director Butter. This project is in my backyard. When we came here last month, I was dead set against the proposal. Um, but, uh, Mr. Zucko, a few of board members said, it's better than the alternative, which was going to be the bays.
Yeah.
The, uh, how many bays, what was it? Twenty-one bays where they could come and go as they please. They could work all night or whatever. So my, my wife and I, we talked about it and we thought that this would be a better, we'd rather have nothing back there. Let the wild animals stay there where they are and everybody be happy. We'd rather have nothing there. But of the two, I guess this is, this is the, the best alternative. And just last month, I was going to bring this story up. I didn't want to name the, the dealer because the dealer wasn't named, but last month I brought my van over there to be worked on. It was there for a while. It had a, a leaking oil pan. So it was sitting in the driveway there with the oil pan leaking. I brought it there to get an estimate because I didn't know if I wanted to get it fixed or not. So they gave me, they did the work, didn't do the work, but they brought it in, see what needed to be done, packed the vehicle back outside again. Then I went to pick it up. And, uh, they said, well, your vehicle's out in the back. And I didn't have it done, the work done. I just needed an estimate. So I said, oh, where is it? And he said, oh, it's out there in the back row. There were hundreds of cars back there. It was, it was packed back there behind the dealership. So that's something else just to think about. I had a leaking oil pan back there. But like I said, of the, of the two, this is the best, the best, uh, alternative.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Is there any other comments? All right. So this makes put Bob's mind at ease. If we have vote to revise these, uh, proposal visions. Chris, what would you vote?
Yes, sir.
I would vote to accept. Anthony?
Vote to accept.
Okay. There's your answer. Uh, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit.
We have a, a motion and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Judge, judge, approve the modification.
Approve the modification, excuse me.
Propose.
Proposed modification. Okay. To propose, uh, proposed modification. We have a motion. We have a, a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Carried. Thank you, Bob. Back to me. Back to you.
Okay. Let me put my agenda. I should be able to figure this without. Um, actually, let's see. We have to approve some minutes from the April twentieth and the May eighteenth, uh, meetings.
Just the April.
Just the April. That's all we got? Just April?
Twenty.
Okay. Uh, are we all here? No, actually Anthony was not here. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the April minutes unless anyone has any changes or corrections they'd like to suggest.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carries. You have a question?
I have one additional item just to inform the board.
Okay. We have two additional items, but.
Okay.
But, um, I'll let you go first because I'm, I'm that type of guy.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you had asked, uh, me to contact a, uh, someone who had submitted an application with basically a Zera copy of a twenty-year-old septic plan.
Oh, yes, I did tell you. Yes.
So I did do that and I informed them that, uh, as a policy, the board is, has, does not encourage that anymore as well as the fact that you're using someone else's old engineered drawings for something. In addition, they didn't even sketch in what they wanted to do on that plan. So I informed him and, you know, I mean, it is four more weeks till the hearing. So to, that he has an opportunity to do that. But I will also, Kathy was, uh, said that the last time your rules and regs have been adopted or modified is also more than twenty-plus years ago, if not longer. So we are going to dig those out and probably place, um, that on the agenda just for a review for the next meeting. And we'll, once we find them, we'll send them out and I'll send out, um, if I feel that, that we should add, amend. And I'll send out, if I feel that we should add, amend them and have some revisions, I'll have at least an outline for your next meeting of what we should do.
Start the discussion on what changes we need.
Exactly.
To that point, though, in the meantime, and Mark is correct, we talked about this. I know we've discussed about what plans we should be accepting. Some people bring in pigeon scratching, some people bring in full-blown, certified, stamped. And I think we're safer to be on the record. I mean, we have five of the six members here right now. How do we want to define what plans to make staff's job easier when people come in so they don't have to guess what we are going to accept and not going to accept? I mean, do we want to require stamped plans at this point? What do we want to? How do we want to define what we're going to accept, basically?
It, almost every plan that we've been receiving over the last few months has been surveyed, updated, surveyed, planned, like tonight. Your applications tonight, your applications last meeting. And going back, I think it's been a while since there's been something that wasn't. Or at least they've had a updated, you know, they had it surveyed in the recent past and they were able to have that modified. So, but some of these, where they go to the Board of Health and they ask for a Xerox copy of.
Of something that was done 25 years ago.
Yes.
Yep.
Really should not be.
Alright, so we want stamped plans. Is that correct?
I would, I would want, if they're going to submit a plan that, you know, especially if it's showing setbacks to property lines, I want it stamped by PLS.
Well, it kind of has to be.
Well, some of them, they don't.
Like, they're the authority to determine, like, what's correct and what's not correct.
Right, because you can draw a line, you know, especially if you go to assessor's map and just use the assessor's map and just draw a line and give setbacks to the side. Well, the assessor's maps aren't too accurate, basically.
Hey, I take offense to that.
I hate to tell you.
Does it make it cost prohibitive on, like, some applications? If it's like a, well, $500 shed and.
Yeah, that's my only concern, obviously, is somebody's.
$2,000 stamp.
Spending $1,500 on a something. I mean, again, I don't want a pigeon scratching, but I also want to be reasonable to them.
Right.
Reasonable, but if you go on to areas like a lot of these, where we have these little tiny lots, which is Clark Shores and all the other ones out there. It is, for somebody to come down without a surveyor, come out there and put, well, the blot line's right here and we're going to be 10 feet off the lot line, I hate to tell you what it costs to do a survey in Clark Shores. It's expensive, if you want to do it correctly.
Listen, I'm in complete agreement, but I'm going to kind of piggyback on what Chris said. I'm thinking about the person who's putting a shed up on, you know, on Kenneth Street or Hilt Street.
Right.
And it's, you know, they're going to go two feet into the setback. I mean, for them to spend $1,500 because they're.
Well, that's true. But if you, as long as they don't come and hire me. If you, let's put it this way, if they're putting a foundation in the ground.
Yep.
Then I would require a stamp. But if they're just putting a portable shed.
That might be a good qualifier.
I think that's actually a really good idea.
Yeah. Then if not, if they're just having a shed that can be moved, fine. If it's a property in the wrong space, move the shed. But you can't move a permanent structure attached to a house. If it involves a foundation, then it should have a stamp in there saying.
So any type of foundational structure.
Yes.
We need a stamped set of plans.
Right, but if it's a movable shed from whatever shed manufacturer, I really don't care.
So sonotubes would fit that description as well?
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, well, sonotubes are foundational, that's why I'm saying foundational structure, not just a, I don't want people thinking, oh, I'm not digging a base.
No, but if you put, if you put sonotubes in and you build a structure attached to another structure, let me tell you something. If it, if you're, if it's off, it's a very expensive mistake.
You're not moving it.
You're not moving it. So you might as well.
And we have seen in the past couple of hearings, you know, I think we've had a couple of sonotube things where the Board of Health is referencing, you know, other tubes far enough away from what we're looking to do here, so. Yeah, I think that's a fair.
Okay, we'll look at what your existing regs say and.
So until that's done, in the meantime, I don't know if we necessarily need to do a formal vote, but the consensus of the group, unless anybody wants to speak up otherwise, is that when someone's coming in, we want plant, stamped plans for anything that has a foundational structure on them, within what timeframe? Do we want them to be up to a year old, two years old, six months? I mean, I don't, you know, people stop projects, they stop, they don't, you know, they don't.
Well, if they have a surveyed plan, like if you had surveyed the property five years ago and they go back to you, you only have to update and show, but it would be stamped for the submitter. In other words, you would draw in to scale the.
Yeah, so you're saying five years ago, you go back to Jeff, he's going to say, yeah, it is, I'll stamp it again. But if I just went to Jeff 18 months ago and just, for whatever reason, didn't come before the board now for whatever reason, what's, you know, what's a reasonable? I'm trying to tighten everything up.
Most, every, when you do, especially in that area, when you do a boundary survey out there and you're spending $1,500 bucks, those people want something in the ground for the corners. And that's what we do. We stick, you know, usually it's rebar with a survey cap on it. And then all you have to do is go out there and find the two corners. They're only 50 by 100, they're only 5,000 square foot lots. Just run a string if you really wanted to check it.
So what's reasonable? How old can the plan be?
Let's say five at tops.
Stamped plans for any foundational.
Right, and if.
Within five years. Right, outside of the five years or?
Well, what does outside of five years matter? It's still a document.
It's a lot of things, yeah, if the corner's been monumented, it doesn't make any difference. If the building is shown, if you locate the building once and you show it on the plan and you have all the corners, nothing, nothing's going to change in five years, unless they add something to the building. That's the only thing.
So timeframe doesn't matter?
It's.
It's new structures that have foundational.
Right, that's how it says, skip the time element.
Okay. We all good with that consensus?
Yeah.
Okay, now you know what to tell people until we clean up our regs.
When does that actually come into place? For example, someone wanted to put a shed in, they give us some drawings and say they just doctor it up at home to make it what they wanted. Like, who's going out there and actually measuring it?
Nate. Yeah, that's why it's conditioned. He goes out and says, alright, they said you got to be within eight feet. He measures it, sorry, not within eight feet. Tear it down and move it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If they have an, if they have an idea where their property, if they haven't had it surveyed, whoever's doing it sets, they'll set the corners. And then all Nate has to do is, he can eyeball it. Basically what it is.
Okay, so the only other item I have before us, if I can find the sheet you gave me, Kathy, is we found Chris Carmichael. He sent an email to Kathy that, thank you for reaching out, Kathy. Unfortunately, my schedule won't allow me to continue on the board. I wish everyone well moving forward. Best, Chris Carmichael. So we will take that as his resignation. I don't even know if we've notified the select board yet, but.
Not yet.
But we will. But in the meantime, he was a regular member, so we have two associate members right now. Nothing personal, Anthony, but Chris has been here for a while, so I'm going to, I'm going to recommend that we make a motion to make a recommendation that the Board of Selectmen appoint you a regular member.
Sure, I second that.
You shouldn't second that, come on.
I seconded.
You seconded. You can second it, but it looks a little awkward, so. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Alright, so we'll send a memo off to the Board of Selectmen and. Okay, we're at the end, folks. Next meeting, Thursday, July 20th, here, 7 o'clock. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.